Hello. Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're working through some technical difficulties as I'm sure those of you online can hear and see the folks in the room are absolutely experiencing it with us. I think we're in a good spot now. Good evening, everyone. This is Joe Malash, I'm the very proud superintendent here in Cherry Hill, and I'm thrilled to welcome you all this evening to another in our series of town hall meetings. Tonight's town hall meeting is focusing specifically on school start times for our community town hall discussion. So I'm glad that you've all taken an opportunity to spend a little bit of time with us. It is a couple of minutes after seven, so we are going to jump right into the evening in recognition of all of the time and the people that are involved and what's going on. So I'd like to go around and introduce the members of the folks who are going to be on this evening's panel. I'll introduce them by name, they'll give a little wave and their title, who they are. Before I do that, I do want to recognize that most of the members of the school start time committee are seated in the audience here in the room with us this evening. You're unable to see them on camera, but most of them are here with us. We just did not have a large enough table or we're set to have everybody sitting up here, but they also are here, they've joined in, so they'll be able to hear directly what it is that people are sharing. So first, starting with Dr. Dennis Perry, our principal from High School East is with us. Dr. Tony Damon, the principal from High School West. Mr. Ben Ovadia, our Board of Education President is here this evening. Mr. Joel Mayer, our board member. Dr. Ben Rude, another one of our board members. Mrs. Rosie Arroyo, a board member. Mrs. Arroyo will also be facilitating the discussion this evening. She's going to be the chair of our activity tonight. Dr. Kwame Morton, Assistant Superintendent, in among all of his responsibilities, Assistant Superintendent. Dr. Morton also chaired this committee about school start times. And also up here is Mr. Mark Wisely. Mr. Wisely is one of our special ed supervisors. So I want to thank all of our panelists, and as I said, most of the other members of the school start time committee are seated in the audience, and that is teachers and administrators and students who are here with us tonight. I'm going to start by having Dr. Morton give us a brief overview presentation of the work that came out of the school start time committee. So Dr. Morton, over to you.
Excellent, all right. All right, thank you so much, Dr. Malash. It was an absolute pleasure for me, thrill of this year to have an opportunity to work with the members of the school start time steering committee. It was a wonderful process, much deliberation, research, conversation, and at the end, we were able to come up with four recommendations, which we thought were very sound. Anyway, just to take everyone through the process that we followed as a committee. So we started in September, early September, with an administration of a survey. We surveyed nearly 4,000 students, 4,000 parents, and 400-plus staff members for their perceptions about high school start times. This information, well, actually, school start times. It wasn't just high school start times, let me correct myself. We then had high school administrators facilitate voice discussions with students, staff, and with parents to review the survey results and gain additional perspective. We then asked for recommendations for members of the school start time steering committee. And from that, we formed a diverse committee of parents, district administrators, building administrators, teachers, and students. And we met several times in October, November, and December to go through a process to research and to come up with recommendations. We then presented our recommendations at the February 8th Board of Education meeting. So something that we didn't necessarily discuss at the February 8th Board of Education meeting, but I just wanted to touch upon was that some of the things that we looked at as non-negotiables when we went through the process of making our recommendations are listed here. So there were some things that we just did not want to affect, impact negatively or change. First of which, instructional day. We wanted to ensure that the instructional day remained consistent. Transportation. Our Director of Transportation was a part of the conversation, and we wanted to maintain at least a minimum of 30 minutes between the start and end times for all levels with each recommendation. One thing that we learned as a committee was that it was preferred, 45 minutes was a preferred amount of time between the start and end time for all levels. In other words, drop off and then the next pickup between levels. Another huge piece for us was contractual agreements that are currently in existence. We ensured that with all recommendations, contractual agreements remain consistent. And then, as part of the survey feedback we received, elementary and middle school families were very satisfied, indicated that they were very satisfied with current start and end times. So we tried to come up with something that would minimally change the start and end times at elementary and middle school. All right, so here were the recommendations that we came up with. Again, the one thing I want to note, one thing that we'll make note of, the start and end times at Barclay Early Childhood Center will remain unaffected. So Recommendation 1. Recommendation 1 moves the high school start and end time 45 minutes later. The elementary start and end time would move 15 minutes later, and their instructional day remains unchanged as well. So the next slide is an example of the start and end times. So we'll see, high school would move from 7:30 to 8:15, proposed start. Middle school would move from 8:00 AM to 7:45. Elementary school moves from 9:00 AM to 9:15. And the corresponding end times are there as well. Recommendation 2, very similar to Recommendation 1, with the exception of the lunch hour at the high school level. The lunch hour would be condensed from the current 54-minute lunch and homeroom model to a 30-minute lunch. 30-minute unit lunch where all students would eat at the same time. In exchange, what this would do was would allow for 24 minutes for all students to engage, we're calling it right now office hours, but to engage in some type of activity where they touch base directly with their teachers the last period of the day. And this time could be used for a variety of reasons. Catch up on assignments, to be part of club hour, things along those lines. Again, the middle school start and end times would start 15 minutes earlier. An elementary start and end time would be 15 minutes later. It looks similar, but remember that the only difference here would be the high school condensing of the lunch. Recommendation 3 moves the high school's start time 69 minutes later and the end time 45 minutes later. Now, this is a version of Recommendation 2, but instead of using the 24 minutes for office hours, the 24 minutes are now given back to students for essentially additional sleep in the morning. Maintains the current allotments for the instructional periods. Again, it condenses the current 54-minute lunch-homeroom model to a 30-minute unit lunch. And it also achieves the minimum 8:30 AM start time recommendation according to sleep scientists. Middle school's start and end times would be 15 minutes earlier. And elementary start and end times would be 15 minutes earlier in this model as well. And then Recommendation 4. Recommendation 4 moves the high school's start and end time 25 minutes later. Again, current allotments for instructional periods remain consistent in this model or this recommendation. The current model for lunch and homeroom, the 54 minutes, remains consistent at the high school level. At the middle school level, the start and end time would move back 25 minutes later. And at the elementary level, the start and end time would move back 25 minutes later as well. And here's what that looks like. Now, if you've been following the news, you probably have heard within the last week or so, there's been a bill that's been introduced here in New Jersey for mandatory later starts for high schools across the entire state. I believe the time that is being suggested here is 8:30. Right now, it's working its way through the governmental process, but you know, this bill has been introduced. And just for comparative purposes, this next slide here are the four recommendations that the committee identified, and lists the differences between each one of those recommendations. All right, I'm going to stop there and we'll allow for, I guess, some feedback.
Thank you, Dr. Morton. I really appreciate the work that you and the committee did in putting this together, abbreviating what you put together for this evening. This presentation will be posted on the website tomorrow afternoon. We'll work again with our folks in technology to share this. In fact, from technology with us this evening, we have Mark Levinsky and Marcus Holman. Our Director of Operations, Don Bart, is in the room with us as always when we're doing a production like this. And our Public Information Officer, Barbara Wilson, who is also our timekeeper, is with us this evening. So process-wise, what we're going to do is in a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Arroyo, who's going to say a couple of words and then start us out in our discussion and then having people make comments, is we will alternate back and forth between people making comments online and people making comments that are here live in the audience with us. I do want to remind folks that we are here specifically to talk about and take information about school start times. We will not be entertaining discussion points or talking points about other topics. We really want to streamline this conversation and focus specifically on school start times. There's always ways that you can get in touch with us and share thoughts and perspectives, but we really want to do keep a focus this evening. When we come time to close the evening around 8:30, we will put up another slide, now that Dr. Morton is prepared. We've organized a specific email address so that folks who want to weigh in or have additional thoughts or additional information that they want to share will be able to send that to a dedicated email address that we will post. And we will also be launching a thought exchange so that folks can share their perspective through the thought exchange. So Mrs. Arroyo, let me turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Malash. Thank you, Dr. Morton, for the updated presentation. And I just want to thank everybody who's on the line and those of you that joined us today for allowing us the opportunity to share your evening to further have conversation around school start times. As Dr. Morton mentioned, we're probably going to be following, probably, we will be following the bill that has just been proposed closely and to see how that moves. But it gives us an opportune time to share our thoughts as a board, but more importantly, listen to all of you and where you're at in terms of where school times start and your feedback. And hopefully, we move through that process along with what legislators have in mind or what they propose to have in mind. But definitely, the voice of our community is priority. So right now, I will start off with in-person comments first, and then we'll switch over to... So any students that want to speak first, if you would come up to the podium? And if there are students on the line, if you could kind of find a way to make it known that you're a student so that you can be ahead of the game with everyone? So any student in the audience? So you'd like us to put the start time slides, the last slide, up on the screen? Okay. Thank you. So any students that'd like to share their thoughts with us? Any students on the line? Isa?
Hi, my name is Isa. I'm a junior at Cherry Hill East. And I worked last year, like, on the Board of Later Start Times with Gina and some of the other members. And so I just wanted to kind of explain some of the feedback that I've heard from my peers and just the feedback that I've gotten in general and that I have. So I've heard a lot of people like the 8:39 start time, but their one concern has been the shorter lunchtime as well as after-school sports. So I'd appreciate if you guys could talk a little bit about how sports would be impacted, because I know that's been a really big concern for some of my peers. I personally like the first proposal with the 8:15 start, because I think it minimally changes the schedule and would still give us enough time to get to sleep, and it doesn't end too late, and we'd keep our hour of lunch. And as a student athlete who's really involved in a lot of clubs, I do like having that hour lunch. So personally, that's just what I like, but I think all the proposals are really great. I would just would want to know a little bit about the after-school sports thing.
As we're going to have Mr. Barao, who's our Director of Athletics, is with us. He was one of the committee members. Mr. Barao's coming up to the podium just to share a couple of thoughts about potential impact on athletics.
Good evening. So I think that the way to look at this, there are two different ways. One of the things that we found out during the pandemic was we had actually several of our teams actually practiced before school. So they actually came in at 6:30, they had practiced before school. They went home, someone went home, someone showered downstairs, they got ready, they went to class all day, and they actually just went home right after school. And for practices and things like that for a later start time, that worked for 8:30, because it allowed them to have a good hour and a half where they could practice from 6:30 to 8:00, get dressed, you know, and get beyond class on time. The only challenge here is that, as far as games are concerned, you need about an hour and 15 minutes from the end of school time to whenever the game starts. So if we had a 3:15 end time, that would mean we wouldn't be able to start our first game until 4:30. And during the winter, not so much of an issue. In the fall, with the daylight savings times, unless we're going to put some lights up, we'd have to come up with a new plan. Can we do that? Absolutely. But it'll be something that will definitely have to be considered with those issues, just because you do need that hour and 15 minutes. The only other issue is that it's not just us if we go to a later start time for our games that it affects. It's not just Cherry Hill. It's, we play probably close to 80 different teams throughout the school year. So all of those teams would also have to be affected. So our away games, when we travel, those type of things, those things would also be impacted as well, where we'd have to work with them. One other concern that we have is, for instance, like golf, we use an outside vendor, where they let us use their course. Well, if we don't tee off by, for Cherry Hill East, if we don't tee off by 3 o'clock, we can't get on, Woodcrest will not let us use their facility. So they're all things that are concerns, but you know, as always, we'll make it work, right? So whatever we have to do to make sure that we get it impacted, but we're creative in our solutions.
Thank you. Anyone, any other students on the line? Okay, so now we'll open it up to anyone with comments. So anyone in the audience? I'm sorry, could you state your name and your municipality, please?
My name is Gwen Chine, and I live in Cherry Hill. Two kids, and one is at east or west right now. So I would be in proposed, I think it was number three, with the latest start time of 8:39. I had two kids, two teenagers over the pandemic, and I really saw a huge difference in their ability to sleep in later and be attentive in the first class that they went to, and also just overall mood demeanor throughout the day. I know that there were a lot of other changes around COVID, so it's hard to tell, but I also fully support all the research and the science that I've seen that shows that the later start times are just better for adolescent development. I also think with the proposal changed with the daylight savings time, it could impact things too, as far as being in the morning. And there was one thing on the side that I didn't see that I have looked at with research with adolescents and driving. So they did a couple of studies where they moved the start time one hour later, and there was a 70% decrease in teen motorbike vehicle driving accidents. So there's a lot of research around that, that I just, with two teenagers driving, was impacting me.
Thank you so much. Anju? If you could just state your name and your municipality?
My name is Anjana Patel, and I live in Cherry Hill. Only question I have is how quickly would this take effect?
Hi, it's Dr. Malash. So some of it would be dependent upon when a final decision is made by the district. The earliest that any change in school start time could go into effect in Cherry Hill would be the fall of 2023. There's no way that even if a decision was made by the board tonight, which it couldn't be, because we don't have a quorum of the board, it could not happen for September of 2022. September of 2023 would be the absolute earliest that anything could change.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Malash. Audience? Yeah, I'm sorry, ma'am, you have to go up to the podium.
Okay, so my name is Karen Bell, I live in Cherry Hill. I think Dr. Malosh and most of you recognize me from coming here for years asking for later start times. I remember when we switched it back the other way, and as soon as we did, even though all the studies and everything was already out, I started coming to meetings and asking to the point where Dr. Malosh would say, "I know why you're here." So, okay, so I'm glad that we're working on that, and that's wonderful to see all this work that's being done. I'd like some elaboration on the contractual agreements, because I think it's very hard for us to understand what exactly do those contractual agreements say? We contract this many buses, we contract this much time? I mean, I have no idea, that's very nebulous. Another thing I'd like to say is that if we're going to do all this work to change it, obviously, Dr. Kwame mentioned this, but the 8:30 confuses me, and the only thing I don't want to see, not really confuses me actually, it leads to later confusion and then, you know, change for '23 and then change for, you know, the next year. So maybe we can, you know, streamline that if we, seeing how that's going, right? If it's not going to be put in place yet, which obviously you've thought of that. I'm just stating it. Let's see. Well, and thanks. Oh, and I don't want to see the middle school take a bigger hit than 15 minutes on account of the 8:30 legislation that comes in, if need be. That's not something I'm interested in for those children, for the same reasons that everyone's been going on. And I appreciate all of your time, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. So there's a couple of things in terms of contractual agreements. Some of them do deal with transportation. Cherry Hill does not, we don't own any school buses. We contract out all the busing that we do, and we run our busing in a tiered system where, for the most part, just about every school bus does at least three bus runs in the morning. They do a high school run, a middle school run, and an elementary run. And the same thing in the afternoon, a high school run, a middle school run, and an elementary run. So we tier that. So there are contractual pieces that are there. More of what Dr. Morton referred to in his presentation, deal with the contractual agreements that we have with our employees in terms of the number of hours of work that folks have, the student contact time, number of consecutive hours that can be worked, lunch, you know, all that kind of stuff that feeds into those contracts. We have to honor those, right? We've been very successful, the board has worked incredibly hard over the last two years to settle very fair and appropriate agreements with all of our collective bargaining units. We're in the process of finalizing one with the educational assistance right now. So that certainly has always has to be a focus of ours is to make sure that we're upholding our responsibility as the employer to maintain the tenants that are included within that contract. I think that's really, I think that's all.
Thank you. The email shows ammcgee08@gmail. If you can unmute yourself and state your name and municipality.
Hi, my name is Kelly Gasling. My question is about, I know the American Academy of Pediatrics study has been cited as the basis for changing the start times. I noticed when I read the study that it also recommended that middle school times also start later than eight, at 8:30 or later. It was high school and middle school students should both have later start times. So I wanted to encourage the board and the district to consider going back and potentially getting more feedback from middle school and elementary school parents about the middle school start time being a little earlier than it is, but dramatically earlier than the elementary in the new proposals. Because I actually think that there's probably a lot of parents like me who have an elementary student and a middle student, or maybe an upper elementary student who's going to be a middle student, and can see that an earlier start time for an elementary school student makes a lot more sense, and a later start time for a middle school student, and to consider flip-flopping those, because I just, again, think it lines up as the American Academy of Pediatrics pointed out with kind of the natural rhythms of those students, and who's up early and who's generally not up early. So I just wanted to ask that you all consider that as you are fleshing this out. Otherwise, I'm, you know, really, really excited about having certainly a later high school time. It's certainly a dramatic difference, and very exciting that it's being considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience?
Hey, Lori Neary, Cherry Hill. So I definitely agree with what the previous caller had stated. I don't agree with starting the middle schoolers any earlier, for certain. It would definitely make much more sense to be starting elementary the earliest if you had to change it. I know community members gave feedback that at the elementary level, they were happy with their start time. I don't think that translated to move my start time later for elementary. My concern is for working families. That childcare was going to become incredibly onerous. And whether or not you realize it, I've lived it trying to get childcare on the front end of the day and the back end of the day, and at very awkward times. If they didn't have to get childcare in the morning and only had to focus on the afternoon, it may, I don't want to say it certainly will, but it may make it easier for those families to obtain that. And I'm saying that having the privilege of being able to make any one of these works, even though my children would probably kill me, and I have three out of the four that will be at the middle level and high school level when this goes through. But looking at that, that's a large portion of the population. We have 12 elementary schools. I don't see elementary or middle school represented here right now in this conversation. And that worries me a little bit, because those families are going to be greatly impacted, and their elementary school kids are in that level the longest out of all the levels. So I want to be mindful in what that means.
So I want to be mindful in what that means and how that impacts. Because it is true, I can tell you, my eight-year-old gets out of bed far earlier than my other three children. In fact, my daughter, I'll be lucky if I get her there at nine thirty, let alone, you know, even doing middle school earlier. So that, to me, developmentally, I'd like to know the research on that, making more sense. Because now those kids are still going to get up early, and we want them to be focused till three forty-five in the afternoon or three fifty-five in the afternoon, and from the ages of five to eight, I hope we're going to give somebody a nap, because they won't make it. And then we're going to send them home to their families at almost maybe five o'clock in the afternoon, for some instance, for a post-afternoon meltdown in the middle of dinner hour. We're going to have some really unhappy families, I fear, if we make that decision without taking a good, hard, long look at how we do it for the elementary. I agree. I said it when I sat at the table with everyone. We need to adjust high school start times. My oldest would disagree. I know that he's different. He likes his day the way it is. But I, I know it's coming, but let's, let's look at it and take a look at the survey results. Of the families at the elementary level that answered, yes, I'm happy, how many of them have middle school and high schoolers right now? How many of them only have elementary school students? So they're, they only have a second grader. I'm not going to borrow tomorrow's problems today. I'm not worried about it till I get there. I don't know that we know that and we're making these decisions. I feel like we need to know all the information of the districts already doing it. How many of them are adjusting their middle school and elementary school start times? How many of them, is that not even a concern? Because they're not one district. I don't know that. So I think that that's a lot to think about, because when we do it, we're only going to do it once, and we want to do it right for all our families, all the kids. And I have teenagers, and one was asleep before we came to this meeting, so I know it's needed. But if we're going to have sports at six thirty in the morning, I don't know what we've achieved through this process either, because are they getting up earlier? Just please think about that, draw that all out before we make a decision. Thanks.
Thank you. I think the additional start thought exchange and accessibility to the email for further conversations and input from our elementary and middle school parents would be helpful. So just be mindful and share that on social media platforms and get as many parents that you know in the same, in similar situations or in elementary, middle school to share their thoughts as well. Thank you.
Ms. Roy, let me just add, Mrs. Wilson reminds me that the thought exchange will ask people to identify the grade level band where their children are attending school, to get additional information, to go a little bit deeper. And she also wants to remind us that it's about seven thirty-five, so we have a little bit less than an hour left, just time-wise.
Thank you. I I have Lauren. Lauren, if you can unmute.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Hi, I really want to echo what Lori.
Lauren, could you state your name and your?
Oh, I'm sorry, Lauren Greenberg, Cherry Hill. I'd like to echo what Lori and Kelly just said by giving you a perfect example of what goes on in my house in the morning. I have a middle schooler and elementary school twins, and my elementary school twins are up at six o'clock in the morning, and they're literally waiting around for hours to go to school while I'm trying to start work, because I can't start work at nine. I have to start at eight. You know, luckily, I work from home and I can do that. But I'm also trying to get them breakfast at the same time. Meanwhile, my middle schooler, I'm dragging out of bed. So I think moving middle school times earlier and elementary school times later, I mean, I fully support moving the high school start times, but I think, as Lori said, you're going to impact so many people in a negative way, trying to move these middle school and elementary school start times the way you show right now on this chart. It just, none of that makes sense to me. And when I've spoken with a lot of other parents, they feel the same way. So I really think you guys need to revisit that portion of things and figure out how to make it work differently, because I can't see it working like this, the way it is right now. Particularly if daylight savings gets changed permanently, then these kids in middle school are going out in the pitch black. So do we want them standing at bus stops when it's dark out? That's the other thing to consider. So that's all. I just wanted to express that.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience?
This is Aiden Rude, Cherry Hill, and I'm also a member of the Start Times Committee. I just wanted to offer a thought from some of what the previous commenters have said from the perspective of a high school student. I know that one thing I've heard, you know, one of the few criticisms of the later start times idea has been that, you know, it's beneficial for high school students, but maybe not as much for lower-level students like elementary and middle school. And just as a high school student and someone who's, you know, helped push for later start times at that level, I just wanted to say that I absolutely think it's, you know, critical that the middle school and elementary school students are considered. And, you know, as a high school student, I'm not here saying do what's best for high school students. This required the rest. We need to do what's best for every student. You know, as someone who's also on the committee, I think that part of the conversation there was from the initial survey results, that we couldn't do certain things with elementary and middle school times, like flipping them, which is one idea that's out there, because the community was happy with where they currently were, and we didn't want to change them too much. But, you know, I think it's great that now we have opportunities for additional feedback. And so if that feedback is overwhelmingly well, it would be better if we, you know, flipped those times or any of these different ideas, then, well, you know, I think that's why we're here. So as Dr. Milos said, you know, middle school and elementary school and every member of the community, but especially those parents should, you know, voice those ideas and continue to voice those concerns. And again, just as a high school student, you know, I'm not shying away from the lower levels, you know, getting what they need as well. I think that if we can find a better way that maybe is different than the initial feedback suggested, then even better. So, thank you.
Thank you. A A McGee? If you can state your name and municipality.
This is Dr. Aquila McGee, Cherry Hill. I have several things. I have students in all three of these grades, and I have great concerns with all of the movement. I echo some of the people that came before me, definitely thinking about my elementary school student having a ten-hour day. School may not start till nine, but they're up at six, six thirty. They're moving and grooving. And I'm thinking of meltdowns during the school day, because they're exhausted trying to make it to three fifty-five or three forty-five. I'm thinking about my middle schooler who cannot come home alone, and the high schooler is still in school. And the high schooler's responsibility for caring for the middle school child. I'm thinking about before and after care, because you have parents, again, they already have to be at work, and they, they use SAC, or the ones that don't use SAC, because SAC runs out of spaces. And so the JCC and the other local community schools, and their orders of operations and their hours, because there's not going to be a discount for parents, because their child is showing up at these facilities later in the day. I'm also thinking about my high schooler, because forty-five minutes, he barely eats lunch now. He can't seem to somehow manage to get lunch and go see his, his teachers, because during lunch now, they offer tutoring and chat sessions with him. So shortening his lunches is going to just make it worse. He comes home starving every day. So all of these things being considered, I just feel like we, we took a lot of time, we thought about it. But did we consider all these avenues? Did we consider what's going to happen to the elementary schools? You know, high schoolers that want jobs and what their job schedules are like, or their athletics, I'm hearing that too. And I'm just in total agreement that there's some things that still have to be laid on the table, definitely aware of what the governor is proposing, but in light of our children and knowing what they go through in our families and our communities, and how some of us have the opportunity to be home in the afternoon and go in late and be at home, and others have to be out there working. And so I just feel like we've got to reconsider this, especially how it's going to affect the younger ones that rely heavily on their older siblings. And then just, again, that ten-hour day, I'm thinking the ten-hour day, I'm just thinking of my child. By the time he makes the three forty-five, you're nine and a half, ten hours, and you're going to ask him to do homework? No way, no way. So, you know, just more stuff that we have to consider when we think about changing the start time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience?
I'm Jack Neary. I just wanted to put in some info that when reducing the area from lunch break one to lunch break two, our, the area of time, some students, I know that is that their only time where they can't actually go out to different homerooms, and from west at least, and be able to hang out with friends, because sometimes they aren't fortunate enough to be in the same classes, or they are friends with, for example, a freshman's friends with a junior, and their classes don't really interchange. So homeroom is like the sort of only time that they're able to communicate, and that I could see that negatively impacting, because from what I've heard, students wandering the halls has already been an issue. Sorry, just collecting my thoughts right now. And when lowering the time about lunch, it could also make other students feel rushed to eat. And then if they don't finish their food, because there usually is a long line for lunch, because all the students usually gather and they want to eat lunch as soon as possible. So when everybody's kind of in that line, it takes at least five minutes per se, for, for me at least, from, by the time I get into the line to when I'm at my seat to eat. So some students, it takes longer to eat, but it could take up more time or less time. It depends on student. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Margarita Ruiz, if you can state your name and municipality.
Sorry about that. I, I'm Margarita Ruiz. I live in Cherry Hill, and I have a middle schooler. And not to be a dead horse, but I do wonder if there was a reasoning why a full inversion, having high school start the latest and elementary school start the earliest was never discussed. And I do apologize, because I did not look at the original survey, whether or not, when elementary parents were asked if they were happy with their current start times, whether they were given the option of saying, well, if I have to change, would I rather earlier or later? Again, most, most younger children do tend to be up earlier, so it wouldn't necessarily be a hardship for them, perhaps for the parents. But I, I do have to agree that the option of possibly starting elementary school earlier and having middle school start later, whether later than it is now, or even staying at the time that it is, and simply flip elementary and high school start times would even be an option.
Thank you. Dr. Morton?
Yes, thank you so much for your comment. Well, I think one of the non-negotiables that the committee did consider had to do with the idea that elementary parents indicated ninety-three percent satisfaction with the current start and end times. Middle school parents indicated eighty-nine percent satisfaction. So we just felt that it was so overwhelming that it didn't make sense to impact that too much, that if we flip-flop those times, then the question, what was the use of us giving the survey? If we weren't going to really listen to the feedback that we were given? Again, there were, there were four thousand parents in total, probably about twelve hundred represented elementary school, nine hundred at middle school, and then the rest were high school. So we thought it was a substantial, enough representation of people to make a decision based upon that, that feedback. But if we hear otherwise, we certainly can go back to the drawing board and take a look at it and make some changes. The other thing that needs to be considered as well are the parameters around transportation. Again, our, our current allotments of time allow for thirty minutes between the high school and middle school drop-offs, and then an hour between the middle school and elementary school drop-offs. Our transportation department said they need at least forty-five minutes. And with the, with the problems with bus drivers and the inability to find bus drivers, you know, that time may even be stretched as we move forward. So, so those are just some of the challenges that we faced and why we made the decisions that we did.
Thank you, Dr. Morton. So definitely bringing back additional conversation and all the additional comments from community today and the thought exchange and the email, we'll, we'll just reevaluate as a team to get, to move further along in the discussion. Oh, sorry, audience, please.
Hello, my name is Grant Yun. I live in Cherry Hill. I'm a student body vice president at Cherry Hill East High School, and I know from my personal experiences that students at my school are going to bed around the same time as they did during the pandemic. The only difference being that they now need to wake up several hours earlier. As older teenagers, the research presented to the board by the, by the district committee has shown that we naturally need sleep later, and, or that we naturally go to sleep later, sorry. And as a result of the move back to the seven thirty AM time from the nine forty-five pandemic one, many of the students at the high school are sleep deprived. All the proposals that were presented here tonight do aim to improve sleep time for high school students. And I know that many students would greatly benefit in terms of focus and general mental health. And though this might take a lot of effort on the part of the board, high school students definitely need the additional sleep, and it would also improve the learning ability of these high schools. Finally, many students are hesitant about the end times being moved back as a result of moving later start times, or moving the start times to later, and are also curious about the specific function of the office hours. If possible, could someone on the board please explain if office hours would allow students to leave earlier, because they're built in at the end? Thank you.
Dr. Perry?
Good. All right, look at that. Thanks, Grant. That's basically the provision of the office hours was to try to find a way to capture some of the time that we'd lose from our lunch and learn, that has been so beneficial and would also allow for less of an impact with athletics. If athletics competitions start with that need for the hour and fifteen minutes after school, students who are student athletes will be able to leave to go to their, their activity and their game without missing class time. So as a way to try to capture and appease both concerns, one of students leaving class at the end of the day, because they needed to get to an away game, and also for students to have that time with their teachers that they lose from lunch and learn by condensing that time.
Thank you. So we have Carolina Bevid on the line, if you can state your name and municipality.
Hi, Carolina Bevid, Cherry Hill. I wanted to echo what some of the other parents have said, that yes, I appreciate Dr. Morton and the committee acknowledging that elementary school parents do like their current start times, but as an elementary school parent, I would also be satisfied with earlier start times, and I like earlier end times as well for elementary schoolers, because as Mrs. Neary was describing, they do need some time to decompress in the afternoons. And also, I think that this is something that I think we can really take our time on now that some, you know, the state is looking to make it a statewide initiative, because we could really communicate with other schools and coordinate with them, so that things like sports and buses aren't severely impacted, and we could be working in unison with other districts, and also taking into consideration that daylight savings time may become permanent, which makes the mornings darker in the winter, which may change things as well. So I think it's important to just make a good decision on this and not just rush it through.
Thank you. We do plan to take our time in this conversation, especially with pending legislation and all the things that were mentioned. So this is why this, this conversation is important at this moment, so that we can continue to extend. so that we can continue to extend that, that feedback from community and all the team that put together the start of the recommendations. I have, oh, anyone in the audience?
Hi, hello. My name is Gina Liu. Sorry, I was a bit hesitant to come up to speak. I am a member of the later start times committee. I just like to say that I really appreciate the board for opening up this opportunity for the community to give their input as the central part of this process, definitely. CHPS later start times, we did collect some student input from some students and asking them, how do you feel about the proposals? How do you feel about this? I definitely do see that a lot of kids did not know what the office hours were for. But I also saw many kids said that they were considering a 3:15 end time. Because again, number one was sports, but also two, someone did message us, talking to us about how there's kids who work after school. And there's also a lot of students who have responsibilities after school. So I did definitely hear concerns with that. So if that would be taken into consideration, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Gallagher, if you can state your name and your municipality?
Kimberly Gallagher, Cherry Hill. I'm just going to reiterate what a lot of the elementary school parents have said that like as a parent of two young children, I would prefer an earlier start time. And, you know, when I filled out the survey, you know, the, the concept of the time changes weren't really like in my mind, if that makes sense. So, you know, you asked me if I was happy with the start time and I was. And it really wasn't until this conversation started that I realized that seeing the 9:15 and the 9:25 start times that I would be very unhappy if it went later. My kids also get up super early, like 6:00 AM, 6:30, so they sit around for a while before school starts. We also have, you know, activities that we do after school. So this would impact that as well. The only, I do, the only question I do have for the, for, I guess, Dr. Morton is I know that there were students on the panel and your committee. And I'm just curious if you had any middle and elementary school representation when you proposed these first four items. Thank you.
Yes, good, good, actually, good question. We actually had, we had a middle school level principal on the committee with us. We also had parents from all levels as well as part of the committee. We did not have students from the elementary level, of course, or middle-aged students involved in the process. But we did have high school students, some of which you've heard and have, have had the pleasure of hearing tonight.
Thank you. Audience? I'll go back to the line. Corinne Driscoll, if you could state your name and municipality?
Hi there, Corinne Driscoll, Cherry Hill, New Jersey. So tonight I'm speaking as commerce mom, not, you know, sixth grader back, not as, I just have to board member. First, I'd like to say a huge thanks to the committee who spent a ton of time working up the proposals. I know it was a ton of work and you had a lot to look at. And, you know, it's huge. So I do appreciate the time and effort spent, not just by the adults, but by the students. And I certainly do support moving the high school start time to a bit later. I am very interested to know, you know, how many parents, guardians of elementary school students and middle school students who responded to the survey have students in multiple schools and grade levels that were anticipating how the start times will affect their students going forward once their students move to different schools and grade levels when they completed the survey. Most, but more importantly regarding middle school, because I do have a sixth grader. I guess I'm wondering why students in grade six to eight will begin earlier in the majority of the proposals. I am very concerned about students in special education programs, especially those who attend schools outside of their sending schools. Because these kids endure long bus rides to schools that only happen to be, say, 15 to 20 minutes away from their homes. But with all those stops, the trips take 35 to 40 minutes. And more often than not, they arrive at schools rushed with only a few minutes to spare. So for example, my son wakes at 6:00 AM. We live in Barclay and we're only a few minutes from Rosa, but he attends Beck. So the bus picks him up at 7:15 AM to arrive at Beck by 8:00 AM. So we need to be at that bus stop at least five minutes prior, which is 7:10 AM. If the start time for middle school changes to 7:45 AM, my son and I will be at the bus stop before 7:00 AM. And that's pretty early. I mean, I know some adults who don't even wake until 7:00 AM. Also, what some folks might not realize is that parents and guardians of students with special education services are required to be at the bus stop for pickup and drop-off. So that not only affects our student schedules, it affects our family schedules. And I know we've talked a lot about middle school redistricting, but I really don't have faith that the students who receive special education services will be able to attend their neighborhood schools. So changing the school start times is a big thing for the special education community. So I am looking very much forward to the thought exchange. And again, I do thank the committee for all their hard work. I mean, I, I can't even imagine how difficult all of these choices must have been. So thank you for that. And thanks for the time to, to speak today.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience?
Lori Neary, Cherry Hill. One other thing to piggyback on Ms. Driscoll, because I don't know, there's a lot that people don't realize for the special education community. So when thinking about that for the kids that aren't necessarily in their homeschools and they're on the buses late, and then for the elementary school being on the buses so late. There's also services that there are many students that they get that are inside their home that for some of the elementary kids, they may not be able to get after school. If we push their start time so late and if they're getting home 5 o'clock trying to do dinner. And those are critical services for a lot of these kids. So that could become a big challenge. And that's something to think about, you know, outside of the school, understanding that's not necessarily, you know, a job of the school district, but it's critically important to these families. And it's not a small number, you know, 20% of 10,000 kids is not a tiny number. So something to think about. And with regard to the survey, if you put a new one out, it, that would definitely be helpful so people can understand. I am one of those people who answered it. I'm very happy with the elementary start time. And I would like my middle school or my high school to have the exact same start time. So that's probably not something folks took into account because I didn't at all three levels. That, yeah, I wouldn't, if I could have a, my cake and eat my cake, they'd all start at nine. But I wasn't thinking about what, with the way the, the survey was questioned. So just if you're putting out another survey, something to think about. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'd like to apologize, this was my misunderstanding, but we only allow one person or the same, wait, how am I explaining this? Okay, so one person to comment before we do additional comments from everyone, if I made sense. I hope you guys understood me. Long day. Yes. Yeah. Thank you. That's great. So I have a number on the line. It's 489, or, oh, I don't want to tell everybody, 9788. If you can state your name and municipality?
Hi, my name is Jeff Potowicz and I live in Cherry Hill and I'm going to modify what I was going to say. Because I heard a lot of good things here, especially about the special ed. I was going to start off by saying that, that published in January 29, 2020, the state, New Jersey State Department of Education, in accordance with, there's a law, PL 2001-9C224 is required to develop a pilot program for school districts to implement a later start time beginning in the 2020, 2021 school year for a high school age student. The four-year pilot program would include five New Jersey high schools. So the governor, Governor Murphy, who signed this, basically has to do something about the high schools. That's why nothing else was considered because that's what this particular law, law said. But what, what, what appears to happen is then COVID hit and I guess there weren't any. I don't know if we signed up for this or didn't sign up for this. I guess the superintendent can talk about it or the board members. I did send this to the board member. It's entitled Later School Start Times Pilot Program. And I'd just like to know what's going on because in the district or maybe it's just the high school, it's one thing. But Cherry Hill has got multiple, multiple schools. And that could be a problem, monetary problem. And, and, you know, the school board and administration and parents have a lot of things to think about right now, including recovering from COVID and, you know, this is just, you know, redistricting and a lot of other things. And this is just in addition to that. Also the studies, every study that I, there was a study that I read that the issue was they want, it's better for the kids if you have Eastern, Eastern, Eastern standard time or standard time, not daylight savings time. So they really, really shouldn't go to standard time. I'm, I'm sorry, daylight saving time. If they do, it's going to, it's going to bother them. So sleep scientists really said you really need to go on standard time. And I think that's important to, to realize. The other thing is that, that someone mentioned that a student mentioned that at one of the school board meetings, it's really, maybe they would cut down the volume of homework. And that would make it a little bit easier. So kids would be spending at the high school level, less amount of time. And it's been proven, especially with kids who are, who are, you know, who have an IEP with accommodations, they can still learn, but they need accommodations for homework and other things. Now, this wouldn't be like an IEP, but you could really, really teach kids, teach students, if you have, if, if you cut the amount of, if, if you don't have to give as much, as many questions with homework, they can learn just the same if you cut down the homework. That's accommodation that is given to, to, to students with, with special education. And they still learn the materials just as well. Anyway, thank you very much. And that's it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Royal, Mrs. Wilson is waving over to me just reminding us that it is just after 8 o'clock. So we have about 20 more minutes or so, give or take, of questions and comments before we wrap it up. So thank you, Mrs. Wilson.
Anyone in the audience? Not yet. Kristin Viglietta, if you can unmute and state your name and municipality?
Hi, Kristin Viglietta, Cherry Hill. So much of what I'm going to say has already been echoed, but I think it's helpful to hear it again. When will middle and elementary staff and admin voices be added to the committee? I appreciate Dr. Morton explaining why the committee pursued things the way they did based on the survey. But stakeholder input is certainly, stakeholder input is certainly an important piece of the puzzle, but it's not the entire puzzle. Expert recommendations by a board of pediatricians also seems to be extremely important. Why are the options presented tonight following American Academy of Pediatrics recommendations for high school only, but ignoring them for the other nine years of school? Middle school aged kids make up 33% of teenage years, which is the ages the AAP says should start at 8:30 or later. So why would middle schools start earlier? The same recommendation says that elementary schools should start earlier. How are working parents supposed to get their elementary kids to school even later? Also at the elementary level, has the committee thought through what SAC might look like? If there are more parents who need to utilize it with later elementary start times? Can we hire more staff in a climate that it's extremely hard to hire support staff in general? Can the SAC programs even be expanded so more kids can utilize them? Are special education students who are getting home closer to 5 o'clock in the evening going to have time for related services and therapies? Have you spoken with districts who've changed start times and what are they noticing? Are kids simply staying up later or are they in fact getting more sleep? I know there's anecdotal situation that, I know there's an anecdotal situation that high school and middle level students watch elementary students in the morning. But have we actually asked families how frequently this is occurring in the morning and afternoon? And how many families this would actually impact if we moved elementary school times earlier? As high school bus runs occur closer to the busier rush hour with later start times, it would seem that those students would possibly arrive even later. What about students who work after school? With moving elementary later, which does go against the AAP recommendations, what happens to elementary school students? Oh, I'm sorry, in the special ed, I said that already. And then finally, this may be wildly unpopular in Cherry Hill, but is bumping back start times, but not changing anything else, like homework loads on the district parts and on parents overscheduling kids on the stakeholders' part. Aren't we essentially having kids just stay up later so it all winds up moot in the end? I fully support the science that older kids need more sleep and have anecdotal evidence of it in my own home. But perhaps the workload and outside of school commitments also need to be a priority in order for students to really get the true benefit from later start times. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience? Okay. Joanne Stamper, if you can unmute and state your name and municipality?
Hi, thank you for taking my call. Joanna Stamper, I live in Cherry Hill. I have an elementary school student currently and I also attended Cherry Hill schools. I'm also curious about much of what people have already said. I think that last speaker said a lot of the things I was thinking. But I was also wondering why we're so committed to keeping the schedule the same it, as it currently is in the middle and upper school, high school. I know until fairly recently, we started a half hour later from 8 to 2:30 in the high school and 8:30 to 3:00 in the middle school, which would give us an extra half hour to play with. So I was just curious why we're, I guess, what the research was that leads this schedule to be better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stamper, for your question. So the, the school start times actually changed in September of 2013. And that was done after quite a bit of research at the secondary level with the redevelopment of a new high school schedule. One of the issues that occurred at that time was that Cherry Hill, prior to that, or prior to the fall of 2012, continued to utilize basically a factory model of scheduling with eight segmented periods throughout the course of the day. At the time, about 15% of the student population did not take a lunch. They took eight classes instead of taking lunch during the day, which was a concern for families and community members and staff members. And then they also looked at the fact that the academic day was shorter than almost any other academic day at the high school level in the state. So through negotiation process with the teachers association, 30 additional minutes was added on to the contractual day for certificated staff at the middle school and high school. Those 30 minutes included 30 minutes of additional student contact time or instructional time at the elementary level. The 30 minutes were added on to the teacher's day where they started 30 minutes earlier, but did not impact the student time in school during the course of the day. So that's one of the things when Dr. Morton referred to contractual obligations. Part of the contractual obligation is the, the time, you know, that staff have to be in their working locations during the course of the day. So that is what, part of what feeds into that.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience? So I'll go to Mishka, Misha Oaks on the line, if you can state your name and municipality?
It's Misha Oaks in Cherry Hill. I am curious, I really don't think it's been clearly stated, the rationale of moving back the high school, but leaving the middle school where it is when the academy and the pediatrics, as well as the CDC encourage it to be for middle and high school. So I really think, I'm curious as to why we're cherry picking one set of students versus really following the recommendation as it is being given to us. Thank you for your time.
Multitasking this evening. I don't type as fast as I used to. Yeah, so, so I guess when we, when we went through the process, ideally, Yeah, so, so I guess when we, um, when we went through the process, um, ideally we would, we would have loved to move middle school and high school times back. Uh, I guess there was a prioritization of high school in association with the research about, uh, teen drivers and, and teen car crashes. Uh, we heard someone speak about that this evening as well. Uh, if you look at the times, um, any time that's changed in the AM also has a direct implication on the PM times. Now the PM times was important to, to maintain and understanding of are the transportation needs in the, in the, um, in the PM times. So it, it, it's just difficult. If we were to move high school times back, uh, another 15 minutes, then that moves the end time back another 15 minutes and now it begins to collide with the end time for elementary school and we don't have the busing necessarily, we don't have the busing. As Dr. Mosh mentioned, we have staggered bus runs. Uh, there's no way to do a clean pickup. So it, it was really difficult. I mean, it, it took us, it took us, I mean, you know, committees here, it, it took us major haggling and, um, throwing out different scenarios to try to come up with what we did come up with. I think ideally we would, we would, we would like middle school times to move back as well. Uh, but again, just going based upon the survey data from elementary, we, we didn't feel it appropriate to move the elementary times and flip flop those times. Um, we felt that it would have created outrage based upon the voices that had spoken to us, so.
Thank you. So I'll go to Jill Roth Gutman on the line, if you can unmute and state your municipality.
Thank you, Jill Roth Gutman, Cherry Hill. Um, first I just wanted to thank everyone for having this town hall today. Um, I wanted to speak on the last point first, which was about the elementary school student parents, um, you know, saying they were satisfied with the start time, but the way the questions were worded, it was like we were operating in a vacuum about the school's start time. So as an elementary school parent, um, I certainly would be willing to, even though my child loves to sleep in, the opposite of pretty much every other child I know, I would be more than happy to ship them off to school early so I could start my workday early. It's virtually impossible to find before. Care to have an end of program, no matter what time school were to end for elementary school children, because there's just tons of after school programs out there. The same just does not exist for before care, especially when there's transportation needs. And most people start work between eight and nine o'clock in the morning, uh, sometimes earlier. I also have the same concerns that a lot of people mentioned tonight, um, about looking at the high school start time and pushing that back, but not looking at the middle school start time. I also have a middle schooler and the APA and CDC recommendations say eight thirty for mental health, physical health, sleep habits. That, that information's not just geared towards high schoolers. My fear is we're gonna spend this time revamping, um, the school start times and the state is thinking about pushing the school start time for high school, but I guarantee you what comes next is pushing the start time for middle school because the reason it is that we're looking at science and data from these, you know, really credible organizations. And so we can either be on the forefront or be revamping this again in a few years when the state decides they're gonna push the middle school start times back as well. Um, I also have a lot of concerns about this lunch schedule. There's already not enough time for the students to eat lunch in middle and high school. Um, I don't have a high schooler yet, but I hear that all the time. I hear a lot of kids don't take time to eat. Um, and now we're pushing that, you know, we're, we're really squeezing that time. It's a lot of kids trying to get food, uh, in the cafeteria at the same time. We're supposed to be placing emphasis on, you know, social and emotional needs of the students through our district did a lot of work on that this year. And, um, sorry, my elementary school student was whispering in my ear. But the, uh, I feel like with the social emotional piece of things, we're really missing that, um, when we're talking about squeezing the lunchtime and not looking at the middle school or start time. And then the, uh, that busing issue was also mentioned. We, I do not have children in the special education program. As far as start time goes, my kids do have other, some other things going on, but they don't have to, you know, be on a bus early. However, my child still has to be at a bus stop at seven, 10 in the morning to start school at eight. So if that gets pushed earlier, she's gonna be at the bus stop, you know, even earlier at seven. Some kids are gonna be out there at six forty-five. You know, I, I just don't see how that's, you know, I think that becomes a safety issue. You know, when you're having kids stand outside by themselves when it's dark out that early, um, especially if they're the only child at a bus stop. Um, and then lastly, the National Sleep Foundation found that, uh, 60% of sixth through eighth graders and 87% of high schoolers are not getting the recommended amount of sleep that, um, between eight and a half and nine and a half hours of sleep on school nights. So that's a pretty high amount for the sixth to eighth graders as well. I just don't want them to be overlooked and left out. Uh, and I, I think it would be nice to have middle schoolers on the, um, on this committee. You know, that those children have a lot to say. My child circulated, uh, um, a petition over at back about being able to stay in the same school for her eighth grade year and had almost the entire sixth grade class sign off on that petition. So, you know, not just her, but those students have a lot to say. They want their voices heard. They made it known through that petition. I think they would also make it known, um, on these committees too, you know, maybe one student or two students from each of the middle schools. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. We have Craig Becker on the line, if you can unmute and, um, state your municipality name.
Hi, it's Beth Becker, Cherry Hill. Uh, so I agree with a lot of what other people are saying, especially it seems like a lot of the issues with the timing, uh, keep stemming back to this one survey where only one question was answered. And I agree that the question was worded in such a way that like, are you happy with elementary school start time? Sure, why not? Like what else is there, right? So to then use that very basic question, um, that doesn't give any information, doesn't give any other options, doesn't, um, you know, show anything else to people, to use that to, as then a basis to create a whole schedule just seems disingenuous to me because it's not a true, um, survey. Uh, you know, you're, you're basing it on one question, um, when there's a lot more information, I feel like, and, uh, I think you should go back and interview elementary school parents. The other thing was, uh, again with elementary school, several people said having morning care and aftercare is difficult, whereas only having aftercare might be easier. Um, working families can get their kids to school, uh, before they have to go to work and then they have afternoon care. The flip side of that is, um, you know, we have to make sure that we are not causing problems for working families on the other end, on, in the afternoons. We, we have to expand SAC, um, make some other accommodations for families, you know, like, yes, it's anecdotal, but we don't really know the numbers. How many families are, um, having their middle school and high school students who get out of school earlier than elementary school right now, uh, come and watch their elementary school students? We can't have elementary school students going home to empty houses. But I don't think that's an excuse not to do this. I think that's an excuse to do better and to solve that problem because I think it's important enough for us to both protect those students and take care of those students and families that need that, but also follow the science and take care of our high school and middle school students, um, in their social, uh, in their, uh, social and emotional health and physical health. So I'm 100% behind the science for later high school times and later middle school times. I just really want to make sure that we make it equitable for all of the families so that we're not, um, putting an undue burden on, on families. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room for final thoughts, um, on today's discussion? Thank you. Oh, wait. No, it's round two, but if you could state your name at the podium.
So, um, when I used to come to these meetings and speak up, I would say, the goal of this is that a kid shows up, is ready to learn and slept and can be able to take in all the effort that the teachers did, the school did, that everybody did. That's the goal. That's what I used to say. Please push start times, push them up. They can't learn this and that. So I'm saying it again. This, that's the goal. So you're all, everyone's working really hard and that's, you know, just the one liner. And I just think it's important to reiterate that, uh, since I've been doing it for almost a decade now. All right. And thank you, everybody. And, uh, I know this is really hard and really complicated and I think everybody echoes.
Thank you. This is for a last comment on the line, Alana Yares, if you can unmute and state your name, municipality.
Alana Yares, Cherry Hill. Um, I have been following the school district that I grew up in and they were considering also doing later start times. They put out a survey, um, as it has been mentioned in many other comments. Um, the survey didn't ask, um, are you happy with your start time? It asked more, um, specific questions of if we changed your start time to earlier by a certain amount of minutes, would this be okay? If it were later, would this be okay? Just to get a better feel for what the community wanted. Um, they also shared research on school districts that had changed high school to later start times. And it seems like Princeton was able to change to a, a later start time because they grouped the, um, middle school and high school bus routes together because they were on the same campus. However, it's a smaller district. Um, Milburn was also able to do a later start time. I'm just wondering if any thought or if there's a possibility that, um, our district would be able to do later start times and keep elementary school at a similar time and work our bus routes with other districts possibly to do run. So if Pennsauken does an early high school start time, maybe the second round of their bus route could be high school in Cherry Hill or middle school or elementary school in Cherry Hill. I don't know if that's legally allowed. Um, I do know that one of the comments that was stated, um, from the district I grew up in was that it's not as easy to change, uh, start times for one district as it is to change them as a county itself. Um, and so I didn't know if there are any other districts in the county that were also considering later start times, um, that we would be able to work with them and utilize what they are doing to hopefully help us. I know that we are the biggest or one of the biggest in the, in the county. And so that may affect some of what we can do in working with other, um, districts, but just some out of the box thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mrs. Royal and, uh, board members and the panel that's up here, uh, we heard a lot of information and a lot of comments tonight, and I really appreciate, uh, everybody that took the time to weigh in both online and in person. Um, there's a lot that, again, uh, we need to think about. People asked some really good questions. Honestly, people ask some questions for which there are no answers, uh, at this time yet in terms of where we are and what we are doing. Dr. Morton and the committee will go back and, and they will reconvene and they'll have some discussion, uh, about what it is that, that was heard tonight, um, and take a look at that. I also want to remind folks that this is a process, right? This is an, is an ongoing process. Uh, this is a discussion that we initiated with the board, um, probably about a year ago. Um, you know, at meetings where we were talking about it, Dr. Morton will tell you, and when he started in his new position in July, it's one of the first things that we talked about. You know, he worked with Dr. Damon and Dr. Perry to seat students and identify staff members and Ms. Giordano from the Alternative High School to identify folks to start this committee in the fall. Uh, and it came out of a lot of discussion about high school start times initially, you know, and, and that's where the conversation was initiated. Um, as we get deeper into it, we, the presentation was made to the board in February and we're at this point now, there are more thoughts, there are more opinions. And again, it's going to take additional time and additional discussion. These layers of doing it, and, and we're incredibly grateful for the members of the community, uh, who have participated, gives us more to think about and, and more to, um, to try to build in. Um, there are some real challenges, you know, that, the changing this, um, you know, that we are faced with in, in attempting to change this. Uh, somebody, Dr. Podowitz brought up about the, the pilot program and he's right. Uh, COVID impact, the pilot program of districts selecting to change school start time, because it would have gone into effect in the fall of 2020. That did not happen. Uh, as far as I know, uh, I'm not aware and haven't gone through the Department of Ed of, of any districts, um, that did that as part of the pilot program. Um, you know, there was a, a challenge in that way just because of the pandemic and the, the effect that had. Transportation, you hear us talk about transportation a lot. Transportation is perhaps the most confounding variable in everything that we discuss. Um, Cherry Hill is the largest district in Camden County, where the 12th largest district in the state, one of the largest districts, suburban districts in the state behind Hamilton, uh, in time, places like Tom's River. Um, transporting, you know, the, the more than 8,000 students for whom we are responsible to transport on a daily basis is absolutely a confounding factor, uh, in terms of looking at time. A lot of people brought up, you know, about, um, the being light out and, and daylight savings time and what, what it looks like in the beginning. I know, you know, a little bit of the time that I visited with the committee is they were talking, um, you know, and one of the things that always came up when they talked about earlier elementary start time, you know, when was every idea being thrown out? Was that idea, what's it look like for a five-year-old on a bus stop at 10 minutes to seven in the morning? Um, because it will be dark regardless of what happens with daylight savings time. There will be a period where, where those five-year-olds, if, if that's the flip flop of the start time, that those children will be on a bus stop in the dark, uh, in the morning. That, that's real, um, for sure. So let me turn it over to Mr. Ovadia, Dr. Rude, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, just some final thoughts from you as are the three board members. Miss, uh, I think we all owe, uh, Mrs. Royal a thanks and a round of applause for her facilitation But if, if you gentlemen would, would share some final thoughts?
All right. I've been pointed out, uh, to start first. So a couple of things. I want to say that my lived experience matches what a lot of the people said tonight. My, when my kids were at the elementary age, they were up early, um, usually earlier than I wanted to get up. And now I'm the one that, as many of the parents said, I'm dragging them out of bed or knocking on doors. Um, so I really think that, you know, that biology is there and it, and the Cherry Hill School District has had a, a history of looking to our, our scientific organizations in the, throughout the country to make decisions. And I think this is a case where we're not quite in alignment there. So, so I definitely, um, uh, think about things that way. So, so I hear the, I hear the experiences from the parents. I appreciate all of the comments that everybody gave. It was a pleasure to be here to listen to your thoughts. I think about the transportation. When I was a kid, I, my grandmother drove my school bus. So I literally got up, walked next door and got on the bus. It's not that easy here. So i- if you're out there and you're like, oh, I could use a part-time job or I'm retired, but I want to do something, uh, maybe become a school bus driver. There aren't enough of them and that creates problems. Uh, other than that, thanks again for all, all the people who spoke tonight. Um, I hear you. Um, I appreciate your feedback. Um, I am especially sensitive to the middle school issue. I have a middle schooler as well. Um, and, and I hear all of you. So e- even if, if we're able to make change for the high school, that's excellent. Um, but that doesn't mean that as a board member, I'll support, support that, but that doesn't mean I'll stop advocating for the elementary and middle school kids at the same time, because I, I do think that we need to, to think about all of those things. So, uh, thank you again.
First, let me, uh, thank the members of the, the committee that have done a ton of work so far to get where we are. so far to get where we are, recognizing though that we're still relatively early on in a process. But it's a process that, that will work best if what happened tonight continues. Those that came here today, thank you. Everyone who tuned in, logged on and shared their thoughts, their concerns, thank you. Don't stop. There, there will be additional opportunities for you to give us input through, through the email address that was set up, through the thought exchange. And I believe we have at least one more town hall, or we're at least thinking of doing that, right? Yeah, so there will be more opportunities in various formats. We very much value your input and need it in order to come to what, what we will believe in the end will be the best result for all of the students, but also with an eye towards the parents, the parents' needs, the parents' concerns. We're not, believe me. As Dr. Root said, we are parents too. We get it. We understand these issues. Some, some challenges may be more difficult for some families than others. You know, we have, we have three children in the district. They've gone through all of their years through elementary school, middle school, high school. We have two in high school now, one in middle school. I very much agree with a lot of what I've heard today with regards to some of the benefits that a little extra sleep, you know, might provide to our students and to parents as well, by the way. But I cannot stress enough the importance of your voice of, of your experiences so that we can work together to ultimately find a solution and to, to, to make that work in what's going to end up being a difficult sort of game of Tetris with potentially this, the new legislation from the state and what might be happening with the clocks at the federal level. These are all on our horizon. They're on our radar. But quite frankly, the brightest red blips for me as a board member on my radar is, is your voice. So this is just the first of what will be additional opportunities for you to share your concerns, your thoughts, your ideas. They will all be, they will all be considered. They will all be factored in. So let's continue the work that you started today.
Great. So I just wanted to echo my thanks to Mrs. Arroyo for leading tonight's discussion for the Board of Education. Echoing my thanks to administrators, staff, students and other volunteers that got us to this point. And then I think Dr. Morton, when he presented to the board, came up for air, and he said, we need community input. Thanks for everyone who, who started that process again tonight. And a discussion like this really orients the shape of the issue and how you proceed to think about all aspects involved. I think that, you know, I don't think, I don't think it's an issue of we did surveying, and now that we did that surveying, that work is done and we won't revisit it, and we can't adjust it. I think it's an issue of, to get to the first iteration of this, we wanted to do some massive surveying, shape the issue, and then figure out, bring this to public light and say, well, what's next? What have we missed? What questions could we ask differently as we continue through this process? And I believe that's, that's what we're doing now. The news of this week with pending New Jersey legislation absolutely makes us want to be more proactive about this issue. And also how this is being shaped at a statewide level. That's absolutely a factor. I agree with all the board members. It is important that people stay involved, that we hear your voice. We, we all have ideas. We want to really broaden those horizons and see how we move forward as a community. So please, for this moment in time, to get to our next presentations and our next discussion, the thought exchange is critical, the dedicated email, please do be involved. Tell a friend, tell a neighbor, tell another friend and another neighbor, but please do stay involved, and we really cherish your contributions and your input and your ideas and the challenges that you foresee as we navigate this path. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Avadia, and thank you all. Dr. Morton has had up on the screen for us, the dedicated email address, which is schoolstarttime@chclc.org. Also, the link and a QR code for the thought exchange is up there. This presentation will be posted on our website probably sometime later tomorrow afternoon. Mrs. Wilson will certainly be sharing this information out through our social media platforms. And again, thank you, Mr. Bart. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson, Mr. Holman and Mr. Plavinsky. We appreciate you guys hosting for us online. It's been a wonderful night.